Twenty twenty one and welcome pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six three A we are meeting virtually if you would like to put your public comment if you'd like to email that to us you can go to public comment at Kent County MI dot gov or you can of course raise your hand when we get to public comment you will have three minutes and we would like you to state your name and address with that we will open up the meeting if I could scroll down on the agenda call the order but Madam Clerk can you please call the roll?
Good evening Madam Chair as a reminder when I call your name please let me know that you are present and also the location from which you are tuning in from Commissioners Green.
Here Plainfield Township Kent County Michigan.
Antor.
Here Sparta Township.
Here Cortland Township.
Jones.
Here Cannon Township.
Vice Chair Stuck.
I'm here in the city of Walker.
Commissioners Ponstein.
I'm here City of Granville.
Commissioners Burl.
I am here located in the city of Granville.
Coleman.
Here Byron Township.
Breeby.
I'm here Gaines Township Kent County Michigan.
Teal.
Here Grand Rapids Township.
Sparks. Commissioner McCloud.
Here Kentwood Michigan.
City of Grand Rapids and I'm here.
And the Commissioner who gets the award for the furthest away today Commissioner LeGrand.
Here and I am in Hamilton Ontario Canada.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Present on on a Chenabi land known as Grand Rapids Michigan Kent County.
Womack. Commissioner Womack. Woodin Commissioner Woodin.
Here coming in from Grand Rapids Michigan in the Creston neighborhood we're keeping Creston funky.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Here Grand Rapids Michigan Kent County.
And Chair Bolter.
Here Cascade Township Kent County.
One more time.
Yeah we do have a few people that are having issues with their Zoom yep just want to mention that.
Thank you one more time around the horn do we have Commissioner Sparks yet?
I am here I was one of the ones having the problem.
Thank you. Do we have Commissioner Womack?
Yes I can hear you now yes I'm here.
Madam Chair we have nineteen members present zero absent you have a quorum.
Thank you Madam Clerk we are on to item three of our agenda and I will call on Commissioner Burl for our invocation.
All right thanks Madam Chair so I'm not sure if most folks are probably familiar with words of hope and I thought I would go there today and look what was there for the daily devotion and Ben Aragon is the author of this and it I don't know I thought it was kind of a neat neat devotion for our meeting today so the headline reads is there no justice and it says read Jeremiah twelve one four fourteen seventeen you're always righteous Lord yet I would speak with you about your justice and this is where the author goes in we live in an age of protest when societies societies mechanisms were protecting fairness and human dignity breakdown the cry resounds is there no justice we asked this question rhetorically but in Jeremiah twelve the prophet demanded a response after all Jeremiah knew that nothing in the world happened without God's permission how was it that the author of justice permitted the innocent to fall prey and the wicked to prosper to Jeremiah's surprise and hours got the answer he replied that justice was a long game what looked like inaction was the unfolding of a plan that would take the duration of human history God reassured Jeremiah and us that in the end he would call every evil doer to account the problem is that we are all evil doers perfect justice cannot discriminate between sins small or large our only hope is that God's perfect justice might be balanced by his prevailing mercy God met the demands of his justice at the cross of Jesus Christ this meant that anyone could ask for his mercy the apostle John therefore assured us that if we confess our sins God is faithful and just to forgive us our sins first John one nine we can tolerate the world's injustice because we trust God's justice we can face his justice because through Jesus we know his mercy and this is the author been been arrogant so again thought that was fitting and appreciate you giving me the opportunity for the invocation.
Thank you Commissioner Burl really appreciate appreciate you today thank you for that on to item four pledge of allegiance can we get the flag up I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
For which it stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right we are on to item five public comment related to agenda items only so again we will look into that public comment email inbox and also look for hands raised.
No hands raised and there are no messages in the inbox that are related to any items on the agenda.
Great all right moving on to consent agenda I'll call Commissioner Burl for a motion.
He is muted.
Oh there we go I'm sorry I will make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Burl support by Commissioner.
Support by Breeby.
Breeby questions or comments on the consent agenda. I see no hands Madam Clerk please call the roll.
Thank you Madam Chair on the motion to adopt the consent agenda Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McCloud.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair you have nineteen yeas zero nays the motion passes the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you Madam Clerk we are on to item seven resolutions now I'll call Commissioner Morgan for resolution seven A.
Thank you Madam Chair I'd like to move resolution four Cedar Springs Drain District Bonds from the Drain Commission.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan support by Commissioner Sparks Sparks questions or comments on resolution four. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Bolter so my question I kind of listened in on the finance committee meeting and I understand about the bonding and all of that but I think I heard where this is improvements to a city owned property and a business and I wonder if I can get some clarification if the improvements are being just done to these two properties why are others along the drain being assessed for something that's not going to benefit their property?
Is our Drain Commissioner here today?
Yes I.
Commissioner Yonker how are you tonight?
I am good I am good so to answer that Commissioner it sounds like the information wasn't clear at the meeting at the finance meeting but this is not an issue of two properties benefiting from a drain being rerouted this is a issue concerning public safety for the whole city because commercial buildings have been built over the top of the drain and anytime any expansion which in this case was an expansion that brought it to my attention of the issue that we have they wanted to do an addition and a remodel and I couldn't sign off on the building permit because it's illegal to build over the top of our drain in our easement so I have a choice I legally have the authority to go in and tear all the buildings down and clear the easement or we reroute it and we felt the proper thing to do was reroute it this also benefits the city because the city wanted to build a new fire station and they were going to be building it on top of our easement which I couldn't allow that to happen either because it's illegal to build on the drain so there's a lot of people that are benefited by this not just a couple it's the whole city has benefited by this and as the law is written when we do maintenance work or project on a drain the whole drainage district has to share the cost of the project.
See and I guess that's that's the problem I've got in this if it was just along the drain but you just stated where this is a benefit for the whole city up there yet the burden of the cost and the taxes is only on the people in the drain district and if it indeed benefits the whole city I would think the city of Cedar Springs would be picking up more of the share of this except but it doesn't seem that way and and if it is a benefit for the whole city like you say new fire station and that then I think the city of Cedar Springs should be bearing more cost of this than those that are assessed along the drain.
Well the the district Commissioner is the city there's only a few small parcels outside the city that's part of the district the the majority ninety nine point nine five percent of the district is the city it's one in the same so assessment is being put to the people that are getting the benefit and and we're also limited by the state law the drain code is very clear on how we're allowed to recoup the funding for for the drain project so and then we have historical practices that we have to follow it's just not I can just go out there and throw assessments on everybody and anybody I have to follow the guidelines of the law and past practices.
Okay I think just maybe in the future I mean for people that don't sit on the finance committee and this has always been a thing about me is that you know it seems like so much goes through this finance committee and then it comes to the full board you know we don't have the same information or the background you know maybe a map of the whole district who is all being taxed on there what to be in tax would be you know helpful I'm not saying that the project isn't needed or you're not following the state law but it's just a matter of more information in the future for people that sit on the legislative committee.
All right Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you Chair Bolter just a couple of follow up questions for for Ken one when you set the district are you setting that in collaboration with the city of Cedar Springs?
No the district is set again by by the guidelines of the law and the district is the area is evaluated by contour and those contours then determine where the water starts to fall toward this drain and where it goes the opposite direction so within a parcel if you're outside you can have part of your property in the district and part of it's not in the district it's all based on the drainage of the ground of the property.
So do the.
Or acres.
Do the property owners within the district that you've drawn do they have a opportunity to challenge whether they should be in or should not be in?
Absolutely that's all part of the process we've gone through.
So they are given that opportunity so.
Correct.
The last question is what percentage of the overall cost is then allocated to the district all of it some of it?
Well you have the county gets a percentage the city itself gets twenty percent of the cost and then the rest is put out to the the property owners.
So what's the percentage of if it costs two million dollars what percentage of that goes to the district?
I I don't have that number in front of me.
Roger Swetzel's in there he probably has that answer.
He might have that.
Yes thank you Commissioner Stuck so just to just to clarify a little bit the the district includes the city and and it includes some area of the county via there there being county property in the city so all of the cost a hundred percent of the cost is being assessed to the district as it is comprised of the county of the city and the private property owners in the district and in this case the city roads were assessed twenty two point eight one percent the city at large was assessed eighteen point eight six percent Nelson Township was assessed one point one four percent and then most of the rest of it was assessed to the to the to the property owners which of which there were about three hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you Chair I just had two clarifying questions I know we talked about this process at length at finance and you know regarding the our pledging of full faith and credit which makes adequate sense um my question was in the event that does the drain code allow you know if we in the hypothetical where more properties are either in foreclosure or not paying property taxes can the assessment be redistributed amongst the active parcels if there are more inactive parcels or is it going through a DTAM process or is it always reverting to the the section the second paragraph in our resolves where we put up the cash to fill that gap and then it comes back to us in repayments over time and if it goes the second one first much like as we've put in other loans like through CAA in the past or others is there an ability to charge any kind of interest in that reassessment when they're when they come back to us?
Yes we we do have a couple that are out there that we had would stand more than our legal limit used to be three years now it's been increased just takes effect in March we can go up to ten years when we have assessments the common practice of the drain offices if there's assessments that go more than two years we work it out with now Jeff and we put it on a a payment plan and then there's interest incurred based on what the bond interest is at the time of of establishing that that payment plan usually we recover our assessments within no more than two years and those we typically have not charged an interest on the district so yeah we it works as a revolving fund and then at the end of the year and the fall taxes we get the assessments on.
I could add a little bit to that Ken as well if in the end the delinquent tax revolving fund does not take care of things and and there would actually be a shortfall after a tax foreclosure the drain code does provide that the drain office would do a deficiency assessment to the district then to make up the difference so yes there would be a reassessment and any given that reassessment any contribution by the county would would hopefully be very short term only you know the the year or two it would take to collect that deficiency assessment.
Perfect thank you very much.
And I'd like to say that at this point in time I have not any recollection of that ever having taken place it's a very rare thing.
I imagine it was just helpful to know the process more thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Oh I'm sorry Chair I forgot to lower my hand Commissioner Stuck going to ask the questions.
Great Commissioner Jones.
Thank you Chair Bolter I just have a few things yes we did cover this in quite some detail in finance and Ken can you confirm that all parcel owners and participants in the strain district have been notified of this and if so how?
Notified of the assessment.
Of the potential assessment yes.
Well they they have all received mailings we've gone through two hearings one is when the boundaries were were reestablished because we had to update those on this project and they were sent a notice for a hearing to review those boundaries so if they had any questions on that they could take that up with us and that time was was set and and the calendar date and that was sent by and also at that time we had they could review the percentage of what the assessment was on their parcel and they could question us on that after the that hearing was completed which was a we had to have it up for for five eight hours we had it all day and then they had up to ten days where they could appeal that in circuit court and probate court and that didn't happen so they get the they get the notification by mail.
Thank you and go ahead.
And then after that's completed then we send them a notice as to what their assessment dollar amount would be.
Okay and then I had asked in finance and you did follow up with me and it's been addressed already that there's three hundred and forty seven parcels in the drainage district and a hundred and six acres of land can you confirm that please?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah I guess I I don't know where to start this isn't anything out of the ordinary for us folks we this drain code's been around a long long time the drain commissioner's got tremendous taxing power and it's paid by the folks that are in the drain district right Ken?
Correct and I want to correct you it's not taxing it's assessing and and there's a difference in the fact Roger because it's a mindset.
Powers.
You're paying for the.
Given to you by state statute right?
Yeah we recover the cost for the service.
Right but it's been around a long time right Ken?
Nineteen fifty six.
All right so this isn't anything out of the ordinary county to do we've done it for the city of Grand Rapids we've done it for a lot of municipalities around the county right?
Correct.
Okay thank you.
Any other questions or concerns about resolution four before we move on I see no hands Madam Clerk please call the roll.
Thank you Madam Chair on the motion to adopt resolution four Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McCloud.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair you have nineteen yeas zero nays the motion passes resolution four is adopted.
Thank you Madam Clerk we're on to seven B of our agenda and I'll call Commissioner Bukowski for a motion.
Thank you Chair I would like to move resolution five of today's date which is concerning a mobile unit project related to the flu and covid nineteen at the health department.
Moved by Commissioner Bukowski supported by Commissioner.
Womack.
Womack questions or comments on resolution five Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you Chair if if Adam is still on are we purchasing I know we purchased two mobile units with CARES funding are we purchasing additional mobile units or is this mostly about staffing those units that we have?
Yeah thank you for the question Commissioner we did purchase two twenty four foot mobile units which we are operationalizing for for our vaccination efforts this spring this is a a mobile unit a van which the state has made available to us along with money for staffing of the van that will be using both for for covid testing vaccination and influenza work so it'll really add to the bandwidth and the capacity that we have in our mobile fleet.
Okay great thank you.
It's like Commissioner Ponstein has his hand raised.
Just a follow up question for Dr. London Adam what is the scope of this a lot of things I've been getting calls about are people that late eighties early nineties that are at home and they're not in nursing homes and can't get out will the mobile unit address the concerns of people that are homebound and don't get out?
Yeah so that is one of the target areas that we're thinking about with the these more nimble mobile services we're thinking about senior living apartment complexes we're thinking about assisted living centers the individual home setting is more challenging for us because there are so many people living individually independently but this is going to help get penetration at least into some of those more target settings and then we hope to work with Visiting Nurses Association and others to to expand care into those more individual home care settings.
Thank you.
Any other questions about resolution five before we move on I don't see any hands oh Commissioner Womack.
Yes Adam in the mobile units would that be PCR testing or antigen testing is it going to be like instant on the spot or would they take the swab and send it into the laboratory how would that mobile testing go?
So it could be both I expect at least at first it would be PCR testing where we would collect the the samples and bring them back to our laboratory however as antigen tests become more available we could do that in the field as well where you have fifteen minute test so probably a little bit of both.
Last question and would would those be utilized would they be able to be utilized for vaccinations anytime soon?
So we're hoping that'll be a good fit when we have a Johnson Johnson vaccine available where it's a one time regimen and it doesn't have that same alter cold holding which makes that product a little bit more nimble for getting out into the community as opposed to having clicks where it can draw people to us.
Thank you very much thank you very much Mr. London.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to roll call? I don't see any Madam Clerk please call the roll.
Thank you Madam Chair on the motion to adopt resolution five Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor. Commissioner Antor. Commissioners Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby. Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McCloud.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair you have nineteen yeas zero nays the motion passes resolution five is adopted.
Thank you Madam Clerk we're on a seven C and I will call on Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you Chair Bolter I move resolution six of today's date the National Association of County and City Health officials addressing needs. The National Association of County and City Health Officials addressing needs of people with disabilities in COVID-19 planning, mitigation, and recovery efforts from the Health Department.
Moved by Commissioner Reavy, support by Commissioner.
Support by Wooden.
Wooden. Questions or comments on Resolution Six tonight? Hands raised? I don't see any.
Sorry, Chair.
Oh, Commissioner Bolkowski.
Yeah, I was looking for the, sorry. I have to disclose a conflict of interest as I did at the Finance Committee. Disability Advocates of Kent County, my employer, is the disability champion that's mentioned in this item.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Commissioner Antor, is that a hand up or no?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. This is a little out of order a little bit, I guess, but I meant to ask this prior to Dr. London. Adam, I was wondering, at what point do we start to move away from the testing for Corona and just focus totally on vaccinations? Is that, how long is that testing going to go on for, I guess, is what I'm asking? And at what point do we get the returns from spending any time testing at this point?
Yes, the testing is still a very important part of our prevention toolkit. Without testing, it's very difficult for us to control the spread. So I expect that we will be continuing testing until we have some level of herd immunity accomplished. And then we probably will have testing for the long haul in the same way that we have influenza testing as a diagnostic tool in a clinical setting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions tonight regarding Resolution Six? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Six, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burrow.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Reavy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand. Commissioner LeGrand.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Abstain.
Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have eighteen yays, zero nays, one abstention. You, Resolution Six is passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to our last resolution of the evening, seven D, and I will again call Commissioner Reavy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution Seven of today's date, ready by five. Early childhood millage services fetal infant mortality review program appropriation from the Health Department.
Moved by Commissioner Reavy, support by Commissioner.
Support by Womack.
Womack, or Womack. Questions or comments on Resolution Seven for tonight? See no hands. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Lucky Number Seven, Commissioners Green.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Burrow.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Reavy.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution Seven is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to number eight of our agenda, and it is public comment related to any county matter. I do know that Julie Stefan is here today with us from Mashpit Rescue. Julie, are you there? Might have to unmute. I know she was joining us by phone. Julie? Is she on?
Believe I see her.
She's not on mute. Hey, any other public comment today from anyone else? We wait for Julie.
No other hands are raised, and there are no other messages in the public comment email inbox.
Okay, I know Julie was on, and she did communicate with me that she did want to speak in public comments. I hate to move on. I see her, but I don't see her microphone or her camera.
Yeah, it shows that she's on and her mic's on, so I don't know why she's not coming across.
Julie in chat just said she will email us, so we will move on. Thank you, Julie, for joining us, and we look forward to hearing from you. All right, any other public comment today?
I see no other hands and no other messages in the inbox.
Great. We're on to item nine of our agenda, Commissioner Reports. Do we have any reports today? Official reports. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just want to add that I was at the Grand Valley Metro Council meeting this past Thursday, a week ago, and they had some communication challenges with a Zoom bomber. And I just think it's worth noting that we should really stop and recognize our county group from an IT standpoint that's able to have enough technology components in this to keep that part from being an issue for us. So if anyone has heard of that, I just want to let them know it did happen. They handled it as swiftly and as best as they could. And I'm grateful that we didn't have that problem because it was my first experience with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, and thank you to our IT staff. Though I think it would be kind of funny if I was turned into a cat or a dog in one of these. Our animal shelter, animals. Someone wants to do that, whatever. Anyway, Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just two items to report. First of all, with respect to the Crisis Center Task Force, which met earlier this week. We had an opportunity to meet with TBD Solutions, which is the contracted entity with the county for purposes of implementing our crisis response system. It was a very good meeting, and we are very optimistic that they are on track and that we're going to see some significant progress over the course of the next 11 months of their contract, and look forward to hearing from them as we go on. The second item is from the actual regional entity. I know in the work session, we talked a little bit about this issue, but for those of you that don't know, there was an approval by the state to increase a direct care wage of $2 an hour for those frontline workers in the system that has been implemented, but now it sunsets as of the end of February. And the system is now pushed to either pull back those increases at a time when it's the worst opportunity to care, the worst time to keep those people working and keep them on the job. Or we have to go out of pocket and pay for it ourselves. And without the funds coming in at this point, and it clearly will not come in, even if it's pushed through the legislature as rapidly as possible, it's going to cost the region over $1 million every month just to cover that. And so just to warn you that just when we think that we've got our funding issues resolved at the LRE, we're going to take another hit and every month take another loss of the $1 million. So we certainly hope that the legislature is able to solve that problem promptly and get that money pushed back through the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stuck. Commissioner Reavy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just have an update from the Grand Rapids Public Museum. We had a board meeting yesterday. And one of the things that is coming down the pipeline from the museum, they're working on a really large expansion project over the next several years. And it wouldn't begin until about 2023. But a lot of the, some of the exhibits have been unchanged since 1994. And some of the goals of this project are to make the museum more accessible and to provide the community more access. So not only will some of the improvements be made at the museum site right on the Grand River, but also at the archives. And the archives, that's where the museum school is as well. But they want to make the archives more community-friendly. Right now, there's really not a good space for the community to interact with the hundreds of thousands of items the museum has. So that's something coming down the pipeline, and it's going to be really neat. And we'll need to have some more information on it, too. And I'd be happy to sit down with any of the commissioners and talk to you, give you some more details, give you an outline of what the project is. And one thing, too, about the museum attendance during COVID. So right now, they have reduced their capacity to about 30%. And they still are tracking really well with attendance. There's been a lot of involvement still in the community. So it's great that we have that resource available to keep in touch with the community, to help educate. And they're really innovative, too, with what they're doing within classrooms, you know, doing virtual visits and all that. So we've got some really great people working at the museum, and I'm excited to be part of that board.
Commissioner Reavy, and you do a great job. Any other official reports today? See none. Let's move on to Commissioner Miscellaneous, item 10. Any miscellaneous today? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a question regarding the new amphitheater that I read about, heard about on the radio. It's kind of another example of something happening of great significance with county connections that we were not aware of. I guess my question is, similarly to the situation with the Fox Place, I don't understand the authority, I guess, of the CAA. Are we going to be taking a look at that? Because I don't know if there's a loophole in this process that where they're able to unilaterally do some things without our knowledge. I don't think it's calculated. I hope not, but it just seems like there's a lot of questions. I'm wondering why we didn't hear about that project earlier. And, you know, it seems like they got a location already mapped out. And I know there's some other parts of the county that would love to have an amphitheater. So I'm just wondering, are we going to take a deeper dive at that whole process and see? I just don't understand, I guess. And maybe that's on me, but my sense is there's probably some other people that don't understand the dynamics of this arrangement. And I was wondering if it's possible to break it down in some sort of committee meeting? So maybe, you know, we can get up to speed.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Antor. I think there's, a lot of us are new. A lot of us were around on the board when the CAA was formed. And I think it would merit some, probably a very interesting work session or two to really understand how that all works and, you know, kind of look into that a little further. So appreciate the comments. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. And to piggyback on what Commissioner Antor just said, I did attend the CAA meeting that was on Friday that was virtual. My understanding is that amphitheater proposal does need to go through the county. So I believe we will have a chance to get more details and chime in on that. If I'm incorrect, Wayman, please correct me. But that was my takeaway from that meeting, that the city of Grand Rapids was going to look at it first, and then we would have be on that list. Is that correct?
Yes, when it becomes an asset of the convention arena authority, the city of Grand Rapids and the county will have to weigh in. The purchase of the property or the land that would be used is what was on the table this past week from the city of Grand Rapids. You might remember that the legislature provided $5 million through supplemental. Those are the dollars that were earmarked for that purchase. But they have to go through all of the due diligence, all of the planning, all of that before it actually arrives back here to the county board, because we would have to prove it as well as the city of Grand Rapids.
Okay, that wasn't all of my miscellaneous, so I wanted to chime in. We had a very extensive miscellaneous in finance, and I would like to pick up that miscellaneous for the entire board here. And if we could just very briefly summarize, we certainly had a number of people comment that they learned about the agreement for renting to Voss via the news, that there were some concerns about the cost and the process. I believe Wayman heard that through the Finance Committee during our miscellaneous, because I made sure everyone had a chance to speak, some people even twice. So I wanted to see if we could get an update, Chair Bolter, if you want to allow it. But at some point, it would be good to get a status on where that currently stands.
Wayman, do you have any comments you want to share?
Sure, yes. I did send you the board a, quite an extensive outline of where we are with that agreement with the CAA, with SMG. We do have an agreement that's on the table. I hope that it gets signed soon. It had to go through the circular of their attorneys, now another attorney. And we're hoping that that gets settled. It will be rent-free. And only expenses that will be agreed upon, that will be actually used, are the expenses that will be covered. Again, I mentioned that there was never any intent of the county staff to go around the board. We were on the gun to get this moved forward. The location was identified resulting from the collaborative that was pulled together to say, how can we save dollars? How can we reduce the workload on staffs of the hospitals that were involved, as well as the county health department staff? How can we team up to make this a better utilization of time and effort? And the idea is to get as many people through vaccinated as we possibly can to ward off the need to continue to keep businesses closed, restaurants not properly open, schools closed, all those things that we know that we want to see happen. So that was the rationale behind, how can we pull this together? So I'll take a little bit of the fault, I'll take all of it, if need be, about the fact that we did not take this through board process. We did act on it based on the public health code and the fact that those dollars were already allocated. At this point, we're at a place where those dollars that are on the table, the $12,000 a day, that will not be necessary because we've got agreement from the SMG CAA that it will be rent-free. And so we're very pleased with how that worked out. We needed to have, they needed to have more time to assess the actual costs. And they put an extensive effort to really give us better details on that. And it took a little while, but we did finally get that. And now we're at a point where hopefully everything's settled. The partners are all in one accord as far as what the, what their facility and the operation will need. It's just now getting everything signed off on. I support the idea that we need to be more transparent. And so if there's anything that I failed to do through the process, I'll take that responsibility.
All right. Any other miscellaneous, Commissioner Jones, before we move on?
Um, if you could let me do one more follow-up, Wayman. What is the timeframe that you would expect to have this contract, this revised contract signed?
Uh, within the next 24 hours. Within the next hour would be awesome. Within the next hour would be awesome. But yeah, we're hoping to see something back from them today.
And then if I could, Commissioner Bolter, I know it's a little bit long, but I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner Antor's comment. I've been the C A A Liaison Committee member for a number of years and have certainly know enough about this relationship to understand that I agree with Commissioner Antor, that I think maybe a work session on the relationship between the C A A and the board and S M G would be helpful. And I I would like to suggest that that does happen.
All right, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Let me see if I can figure out how to unraise my hand. There it is. So I just want to.
You're muted. Commissioner Coleman, you're muted.
I thought I hit the button.
Well, when you're calling from the cave at Lord of the Rings, it looks like, you know, you might have some issues.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the chance here. Just wanted to so the the Coleman family midday today, thanks to the power of technology like this, was able to watch Beijing television as they welcomed in the Chinese New Year. And so to all those in our community that celebrates Chinese New Year or Lunar New Year, wish you and yours a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just have a couple items here. You know, I did talk about the agreement with the C A A and the DeVos Place Vaccine Clinic at our finance meeting, so I'm not going to expand too much on that other than I hope that the agreement can be signed, the revised agreement. I think, you know, that facility is the right place for this clinic. I look forward to volunteering there next week and along with my husband, so to help get the community vaccinated and hopefully we can get vaccinated a little sooner too. A couple of things I forgot to mention during the commissioner reports regarding D P W. D P W is currently housed in the Road Commission Building. And as we know, the Road Commission is going to be moving their current facility later on in a year, most likely, and D P W has already made plans and are planning to break ground in the next couple of months on a new building that will be located by the Recycling Center. And it'll be housing just the Department of Public Works staff. And we're looking forward to that probably being completed by late fall, I believe. So that's coming down the pipeline. It's something that we've known about for a while and have, you know, worked on plans for quite a while. So it's good to see that coming down the pipeline. And the next thing too is right now the review committee is going through the the applicants for the Sustainable Business Park. You know, obviously kind of a big project on the south side of the county at the South Kent Landfield. So in the next, I believe in April or so, we're supposed to be able to get some more feedback on who the applicants are, you know, what what we're looking forward to. So that's still in process and it's been quite a long time, but you know, they're vetting everything and making sure that, you know, it'll work at our business park. So exciting stuff.
Thank you, Commissioner Breeby. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So I just want to do, I mean, it's a interesting time we're in and I've been getting a lot of phone calls, not just about the vaccines. Things keep going on in the county that have nothing to do with the vaccines. So I just want to give a shout out for the staff. It's sometimes a little difficult to get through the right parties, but sometimes it's even difficult for the public to get through. So I really appreciate the Health Department. The, you know, the administration staff that took care of a housing issue from a citizen that wasn't in my district, but resolved that well and even a call on why the Kent Trails are not plowed in the in in the winter. So I appreciate it. I've recontacted everyone. They said it was great to be contacted directly by a county official and have the problems resolved. So thanks to all the staff. I, you know, I know it's difficult times on how we're dealing and how we're communicating, but just appreciate the efforts you did to resolve these problems for these three residents of the county. So thank you.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. While I'm a little reticent to get too deep into the S M G contract with the Health Department, but just a couple of points of clarification, having been involved a bit in some of the discussions on that. Well, the the most offensive component of that had to do with the rent and the new arrangement of being negotiated is a rent free agreement. It is not a cost free agreement. I think it's important for us to all understand that there are still our costs associated with operating a mass vaccination center at that facility. And the objective, as I understood it and observed it, was to move this to a point of the actual incremental costs that are incurred from operating at that facility or what are going to be addressed in that new agreement. But please don't walk around saying it's a cost free agreement. It still costs money to operate and it's those costs that are being captured. I look forward though to to that agreement being executed. I think when we got into it, the the C A A was and S M G were open to adjusting this to accommodate the concerns that we all raised. So hopefully by tomorrow, as Wayman says, we'll have a new agreement.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Um, I would, they're talking about the facility and forgetting the COVID nineteen vaccinations. I'd like to hear a report from Dr. London on how the whole vaccination rollout is going and how many were, you know, we've been able to do here in Kent County and just get a rounded out report on all of that.
Yeah, we'll we'll have him email that. Maybe we could work with Lori to get us a weekly report of just some stats so that we can share that with the community and give us an update as we proceed through this process. I know everyone is pounding down every door to get more allocation. And and that is what we we're all working on, but it would be great if we could get a weekly report. So that's a great suggestion, Commiss- Commissioner Hennessy, and we will request that formally.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo what a few people said, especially Commissioner Breeby. I think there are some really important things happening at the Department of Public Works. And a lot of progress being made. It's been a long time coming. But I think the the plans that that the board and Dar have been working on are really starting to come to fruition. So the new administration building, which will also have a daily safe chem drop off spot, which I think will be really effective and efficient for people to make sure that they, you know, know how and are putting their hazardous waste into into the right stream. And then, you know, obviously the Sustainable Business Park, something that's that the the board and staff have been working on for some time and and we're starting to really see that come into come to fruition as as we get those anchor tenant applicants. And so really exciting to see the vision coming into place. You know, also want to, you know, thank all of those people that were engaged on working on the new agreement with the C A A. Again, you know, echo Commissioner Steck, be really excited to to get that signed. So, you know, I'm hoping that that Wayne can let us know just as soon as that happens. If it happens in an hour, that'd be fantastic. Tomorrow would be great as well. But I think we'd like to see, you know, that agreement signed and put behind us so we can really focus on what we want to be doing, which is, you know, creating the most efficient vaccine distribution center, you know, in the country. So that we can be the leader that that we want to be. And then just thoughts on on what Carol mentioned about weekly update. Last time I checked the dashboard, which was from the Health Department, which may was maybe like a week ago. I don't think there was anything up there about the vaccine. So maybe that's a, maybe the dashboard is something that can be updated to help us know, you know, some of those basic numbers about, you know, how many vaccines we've received and then how many have been have been shot into people's arms. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Skaggs. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I will just echo all of the sentiments that have been said regarding the arena or the Convention Arena Authority and the contract that's been made and and hope for a quick signature. Regarding the idea of a larger work session, I think that would certainly make sense to discuss the relationship we have with it. I wonder even if it would make sense to broaden that just to talk about ways that we can improve transparency across all the different authorities we're affiliated with. We're very fortunate that many of the authorities have commissioner representatives who provide reports at these meetings, Network One Eighty, L R E, the the airport. There are others that don't have a direct commissioner representative and just finding a ways that we can improve the accessibility and transparency of all of our authorities. Especially the one that has instigated the most recent developments and questions would just be, I think, an improvement that we can all get behind. So, thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, just want to thank the staff and the Health Department for their work on this after this has come to our attention. And just looking at the budget for the DeVos Place, noticing that a lot of these, a lot of the funding is also going to go to the workers there. And for those who have rented that space before, they understand that everything in there is under the union. So there's going to be some costs we may not be able to get around. But I just really want to thank the staff for getting on it so fast. Thank all the other commissioners who are bringing question that our constituents have been asking about that price. And just knowing that our voters, they they do read the news and even though this is federally funded, it's still taxpayers' money in the end, one way or the other. I'm just glad to know this board was able to move fluently in getting some answers answered for our constituents. And thank the Health Department and the staff for their helping there.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Any other first round Commissioner miscellaneous before we go to second round? I don't see any hands. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm very pleased that we're going to be getting this new number. Hopefully it'll be a significant savings and I think the taxpayers will really appreciate that. My my only other is I think I heard earlier, going back to the new amphitheater. I wasn't sure if I heard this right, but are we only going to have input after the land is purchased for that? It seems like that might be getting the cart in front of the horse. Because once the land is purchased for something, you know, it's almost like it doesn't matter what we say at that point because it's going to move forward. Otherwise, there's going to be, you know, terrible optics on this. So that would be my question, if it's been purchased or or is it not purchased yet? And will we have any say prior to that? So that would be my question.
Let's make sure that we can get some additional information, Wayman, if you could get that to.
I was just making a note earlier to do that very thing and we will make sure. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Doesn't look like any other hands, any other hands before I do some housekeeping. Seeing none. I have quite a few things. I'll quickly run through them. We did hire Corn Ferry as a search firm for the administrator replacement process. They are really seeking to gain input from board members. They have reached out to board members. They have hosted two town halls that that I know of possibly more. If you could not make that, they will accommodate you with a phone call, though they would like to try to group these. But there are several commissioners who still have not participated in that. And I would ask that if you feel strongly about this role, please participate, but we do have to move along quickly. So we cannot hold up to wait for Commissioner input as well. So please get with Pam as soon as possible. If you do feel strongly about that and you did miss those two meetings and we will connect you with with the search firm. We do have a budget boot camp. Commissioner Jones asked me to remind you all, especially for new board members, kind of runs through the budget process, how how it works, the timing, et cetera. That will be on two sixteen at nine thirty. I encourage everyone to attend. Obviously, members who have been through this don't need to, but it's optional. Hope that you can attend. Parks, we continue to work on that. We have a pretty good, I think everyone will be excited plan. We're starting to formulate. I was really hopeful to have something sooner. But I do think it's going to be much greater than we all originally originally kind of anticipated. So I look forward to getting more information to you, but I do want you to know that that is in the works and we will hopefully be getting to you soon. Broadband, everyone knows it's near and dear to my heart. It's something I'm very concerned about in this pandemic. It was very, very important that people were able to access the internet. That's not going to change. That problem is probably going to be continuing to exacerbate. It's amazing to me that we live in Kent County and still have areas of this community that don't have access. So we are going to look at that as a board. The right place did attempt to pull this together a few years ago. They did start a subcommittee with various providers, installers, some government entities. We're going to kind of take those folks over here to the county and convene this at the county. So I am going to be, I am announcing tonight, a broadband and technology subcommittee. It's going to be chaired by Commissioner Green. I will also sit on it and Commissioner McLeod will also sit on it. In addition, we have Drain Commissioner Yalker, Road Commission Member Steve Warren. And then we have various companies, providers will be on it as well as our I T staff and Tim Ross from the right place. So that's kind of going to be our launching point. We hope to have our first meeting next month. They will be meeting monthly and the the goal of this is to first get our arms around what are the problems with getting broadband to all corners of the county. We'll assess those those concerns, we'll assess those those problems, and then they'll start looking at solutions. I don't anticipate this subcommittee to end at the end of the year. Probably will most likely need to be re-upped. It may be something that continues, but I'm really happy to get started on it. We may add to this group. This was just a starting point. And we'll go from there. Lastly, on the C A A contract, you know, we we have had concerns. It is unfortunate how that went down. No one likes to be a board member on the county commission and hear about a a large contract from somebody outside of our our county staff. So so that is a concern. I'm glad we addressed it. I also am really proud of our board. I I really am so encouraged that we pulled together as a board by in a bipartisan way to 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 really get the urgency out there and and sound the alarm that this was a concern for our constituents on both sides of the aisle. And I'm also very thankful to Commissioner Steck for stepping in, though this is not a board action. It is taxpayer funded action. And so I'm very, very thankful for him for stepping up and taking the time to really work with the C A A and the county staff to get this done. I'm very, very hopeful that something gets signed very, very soon. And as I would say, this is probably the most honorable, best and highest use of that building and in a in service to this community that that building could could possibly provide. So I really hope that that gets moving forward. With that, I will ask Commissioner Burrow for a motion to adjourn.
I'd love to. I'd like to move to adjourn subject to the call of the chair to Thursday, February the twenty fifth, twenty twenty-one at eight thirty A M.
Move by Commissioner Burrow, support by Commissioner.
Wooden.
Wooden. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We are adjourned till February twenty-fifth at eight thirty. Thank you all.
Thanks.